Good evening. Thank you for your patience. Tonight is the Select Board meeting, Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. This is a virtual session and this is a live broadcast on www.northandovercam.org. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the North Andover Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website, www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So I'll call us to order and I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance if we could.
[Inaudible] [Inaudible]
Thank you.
No, thank you though, thanks for asking. I'm very rarely ever too cold.
All right, so first on our agenda is public comment and as typical when we are remote as this, public comment may be submitted at www.northandoverma.gov/sbpubliccomments. And I know we had a number of comments submitted tonight and I have asked Tom Manager to please read those if you would, as if these folks were here.
All right, so go easy on me because there's a lot of them here. The first one is from Kevin Driscoll and it's the latest one. As a member of the Long-Term Advisory Committee, I have just spoken with Jim LaFond, who is commuting back to North Andover at this time regarding a submitted proposal from Fireside Catering LLC with regards to the Stevens Estate. Having spoken with Laura Bates, I was initially satisfied that accepting this bid was appropriate, but now after receiving comments from Jim Pellic, another former member of the Advisory Committee, and speaking with Jim LaFond, who has also planned to submit a comment, I feel it is in the town's best interest to hold any formal decision to enter into an agreement with Fireside Catering. The Long-Term Advisory Committee was clear in their recommendation to Melissa and the town, and after having read and reread the proposals submitted by Fireside, I'm concerned that we would simply be once again encumbered with operational expenses and costs of running the estate, and that's not what we recommended. Okay, so that's one. The next one is from Jennifer Luz. It's long, ready? Dear Select Board, please accept this public comment concerning the proposal for exclusive catering proposal by Fireside Catering that the town received for the Stevens Estate. I reviewed the proposal today and my comments are based on the knowledge I have gained about the Stevens Estate while serving on the Finance Committee and as the Finance Committee's representative on the Stevens Estate Long-Term Advisory Committee. The Stevens Estate is a valuable community resource. As a member of the Long-Term Advisory Committee, I worked diligently to help develop a set of guiding principles for the future of the estate based on our assessment of the property and our engagement with town citizens. Our vision was that the estate would be entrusted to an organization that could be a true steward of the property, focused on the long-term preservation rehabilitation of the estate, coupled with ample and robust opportunities for community engagement. We believe any organization willing to step into this role must be well-funded, have significant experience in historical properties and community engagement, and be willing to invest in the capital improvements that the estate needs. After review, I am deeply concerned that this catering proposal is not the right solution for the estate. I urge the board to consider, among other things, two things. First, this proposal does not present the best overall financial option for the town. The current proposal returns to the town limited revenue and includes only minimal modest renovations to the main building. These fees proposed do not come close to covering the anticipated near and long-term capital costs needed in the main building and financially could not provide or support for rehabilitation of the other buildings on the property. This proposal essentially would run the estate as it has the last few years, but with the vast majority of the profit and earnings going to a private company. In addition, the proposal lacks type of financial information about specific bidder and not just their affiliated entities that would provide comfort about the specific bidder's ability to support its proposal. Second, the proposal simply fails to meet the state, town, state objectives for the estate. This is not a proposal for a steward of the property, it's for catering. The Long-Term Advisory Committee gathered significant public feedback and it was clear that the town favored preserving the estate and maximizing the opportunities for public engagement at the estate. I understand that those are the objectives of the RFP process and that objective is not simply to offload the estate to any willing bidder. The current proposal falls wellfully short of the objectives. For example, the proposal does not commit to preserving or expanding trails or to continuing to host community events like our movie nights. Moreover, there are no creative suggestions or partnering. At most, the proposal suggests the students at Brooks might be able to do community service there, but their proposal is noticeably silent about opportunities for students in North Andover Public Schools. One or two sledding days a year is not the community access engagement at the estate that our outreach suggested our town strongly wants. This proposal is just their proposal, it is not binding, and the town is free to move forward with the proposal or not. I understand the trustees of reservation prepared a proposal which the catering proposal references, which was submitted minutes late. This is unfortunate and I understand the town is unable to consider a late proposal. I do not know what the town's proposal would have been, but I do know that when the trustees met with the Long-Term Advisory Committee, they expressed a strong desire to maintain rehabilitation of the estate and to bring their well-known educational and community program to the estate. Public information about the trustees shows they are a well-endowed nonprofit organization whose mission is to protect and share the master's place people love for their exceptional scenic, historic, and ecological value. I believe there is a significant chance the trustee's proposal, had it been timely, may have aligned more closely with the town's objectives. After all the time the town has put into studying what to do with the estate, one football by the trustees on the timing of their submission should not be the determining factor. I do not know if a proposal from the trustees would work for the town, but I do believe that our town deserves to fully consider a proposal from the trustees. As a member of the Finance Committee, I understand the dire financial state of the estate at this exact moment, and I appreciate the desire to make a decision quickly that reduces the tension of those financial needs. But I also believe, as a Finance Committee member, a member of the Long-Term Advisory Committee, and as a community member, that the potential long-term benefits of a trustee's proposal aligns with our town's goals as well, is well worth the slight delay that would be caused by running the RFP process again so that their proposal could be considered. Thank you for your consideration. This is from Bill Callahan on Lyman Road. I would like to commend the town manager and town staff, as well as the Evaluation Committee, for their diligent and thorough work on the Stevens Estate RFP. It appears the process has discovered a successful owner of like facilities who will achieve the stated goals of the citizens who participated in the survey last year. The beating will be, the building will be preserved, the land key placed in a conservation restriction, and the town can eliminate the risks inherent in operating a wedding facility. This is sound while executed public policy. Okay, so the next one is from Allison Kerrigan, the General Manager, and Tara Cuchiera, the Director of Sales Marketing, Artis and Chef Catering. Okay, so they are a catering firm, and she did say I could sum hers up, is what she said? Okay. So they are a catering firm who is a preferred caterer at the Stevens Estate. In addition to running events for their private clients, they also continue to offer additional services at no cost and participate in bridal shows, food tasting, community events, open houses, and holidays. They have helped the estate beyond just catering, whether it's shoveling, putting up sidewalls in the tent, et cetera. They always work as a team. Fireside Catering is the only company that submitted a bid and they are not in the current preferred vendor list. In fact, I haven't been able to find any evidence they have ever operated an event at the Stevens Estate. Using Fireside exclusively will financially hurt the group of caterers that worked at the Stevens Estate for years, especially after the pandemic. Our company has always supported local business and is even more important now that we continue to do so. No notice of addendum. Our General Manager reached out to Laurie Berzloff in the Town Manager's office to express why, and according to the requirements expressed in the bid, we were unable to submit a bid. A catering RFP was supposed to become available about eight months ago and they waited to bid on that. When the RFP became available, they were taken aback at the extensive property management and financial responsibilities. They looked into our partnering with a local management company in an effort to qualify for the RFP and that company was not interested. We do not, we did not want to miss out on continuing our longstanding partnership with the Stevens Estate. Artis and Chef Catering is owned by Tuscan Brands. In submitting a bid for exclusivity for catering, they will be able to offer financing for kitchen upkeep and repairs. Having said that, we are also able to work with small businesses to keep other options available at the estate. We were not privy to the add of addendum to the RFP. We did not receive the addendum to review. This leaves us at a disadvantage. Evaluation of bids submitted by Fireside. After evaluating the bids, five scores were submitted. Two town employees voted yes, while three members of the community voted no. Jim LaFond, Chairman of the Long-Term Advisory Committee, David Brown, Chairman of the Board and of Trustees, and Joe Pellic, Member of the Long Range Advisory Committee, all voted no. Mr. Pellic scored Fireside a one, the lowest in all six categories. He stated their proposal is a different event catering program company, not a company who can handle the diverse and complex nature of the Stevens Estate. This bid should be discarded and a new RFP should be issued. Fireside offers to be the exclusive caterer in addition to offering some property updates to better sell the venue. The agreed terms do not adhere to the terms of the RFP, not as it benefit the town. In fact, the new financial terms would drain funds from the town. The estate has been operating self-sufficiently since 2010. The cost of operations is covered by the rental fee and the catering and the bar sales. Currently, each caterer pays out 10% of all sales to the estate in a flat rate. Currently, financial gain. Currently, the enterprise accounts oversee the accounting and management of funds from the Stevens Estate. This protects the town. If the Stevens Estate were to overdraw from its own account, we could not use the general fund to aid the estate. Since 1997, education, police, fire, and infrastructure have been separate from the estate. The town manager has proposed if Fireside Catering is chosen to run the estate, the enterprise fund will become resolved. With rent of only $150,000 and expenses ranging in the range of 80K for utilities, maintenance insurance, and lost revenue of 80K from indirect costs, that rental income cannot cover the town's bills. The town would have to pay out of its budget, which will impact the community. As a full-service caterer, our company can provide many services, including the full management of events, the kitchen maintenance, and hosting community events. Combined with the estate director and a designated facilities manager, the estate can generate profit for the town. Receiving rental fees, the funds generated from the cell phone tower lease, and food and beverage commissions will provide stability for the property without risking a financial burden to the town. Over the years, our catering commission alone totals $84,740. This figure does not reflect the commission for other caterers working at the property. It also does not factor in the beverage income, which we would take over for consideration. It is our hope that you will look thoroughly through the Fireside bid, evaluations in scoring, and all letters. The contract they propose is 10 years. There will be a significant impact on the property. At the very least, we feel you should delay accepting this bid because there are other options that could serve the community and the clients. That's a caterer who works for the, at the caterer.
I thought that's what you said, okay.
And then, sorry.
An existing preferred vendor with financial interest in the status quo?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is from Tom Dugan. Did I say that right? I always get it wrong. I did. Sorry, Tom. Tom Dugan on Beacon Hill Boulevard. Good afternoon. I would like, first like to thank the town manager for her exemplary leadership on the issue of the Stevens Estate. As a member of the trustees of Osgood Hill, the town manager has been supportive, forthright, and honest with members of the board and our community regarding the issues associated with the estate. Thank you. I have three comments tonight regarding the RFP. First, this decision carries the consequences of potentially laying off a town employee. An employee who lives in town, has children in the school system, and most importantly has provided exemplary service in our community, to our community and the management of the estate. Under her tenure, net revenues have increased, expenses decreased, and new programs were added. Moreover, this employee's leadership led to the estate when beating out the property supported by the selected respondent by winning a 2021 Regional Tourism Entertainment Award. I ask that as a condition of this decision, every effort is made to ensure that that employee has guaranteed employment with the vendor or often employed in another town department. Through no fault of hers, we have arrived at this decision. My second point is on the economics of this proposal. While the proposal minimizes the annual risk associated with the management of the enterprise fund, it does not absolve the town of longstanding risks with capital improvements along funding investments in the health of the property's forest, one of the primary means of protecting our watershed. As we draft the proposal, as drafted, the proposal will likely require the town to save net revenue for a number of years, negotiate annually with the vendor on capital improvements, or follow recommendations from the trustees to create other revenue sources to advance capital improvements. I ask that the board set the correct expectation and timeline with residents about when, if this proposal is adopted, we will see immediate and long-term improvements to the buildings, grounds, and watershed identifiable to trustees and the Long-Term Advisory Committee. Finally, I again thank the town manager for the commitment to public access of the property. Strategies will be used to ensure the public has free and open access to the trails, gardens, and grounds. Further, the town manager has identified ways that the non-revenue programs, like library movie nights, house tours, poetry readings, North Andover civic events and teams and holidays, will be treated with the same courtesy, attention, advantageous scheduling as revenue-generating events within the contract. Okay, one more, I think. Hold on, sorry. Okay, this one is from Joe Pellic. I don't know if I know his street. Great Pond Road. Dear members of the SLIC Board, I am writing in response to the RFP submission by Fireside Catering LLC. As someone who has invested significant time and efforts of the Stevens Estate Long-Term Advisory Committee and Stevens Estate Evaluation Committee, I feel it is both appropriate and prudent to urge you to consider the following points in evaluating an agreement between the North Andover and Fireside Catering. One, town meeting previously and overwhelmingly rejected a catering event company to care for the Stevens Estate. The town received an events company, Ailic and Vanquitt's, proposal previously and town rejected that proposal by greater than two-thirds majority. Two, proceeding with Fireside, LLC ignores the public input and objectives presented by the Long-Term Advisory Committee. After the 2019 long-term meeting, the Select Board formed the Stevens Estate Long-Term Advisory Committee. The committee held at least 10 public meetings and conducted at least one flash poll. The Select Board universally praised the committee's report. The committee's report issued just seven months ago and based on public input contained the following recommendations. One, town engaged a nonprofit organization whose mission and purpose is aligned with the town's intentions, including the following. One, this town of North Andover retain ownership. Two, preservation of open space. Three, protection of our watershed. Four, maintenance of trails, public access, and other passive recreation opportunities. Five, preservation of the historic buildings and structures. Six, a focus and emphasis on educational programs for North Andover children and all residents. B, any decision regarding the future of the Stevens Estate be ratified at town meeting. While the proposal from the Fireside Catering LLC allows the town of North Andover to retain ownership of the Stevens Estate, it ignores critical aspects of the recommendation, has fatal flaws. It's not a nonprofit. It does not specify that they're going to maintain the trails or passive recreation. The revenue model does not preserve the historic buildings and structures and only contemplates the renovation of the function room and tent in the main building. The agreement proposes that the town continue to cover utility, insurance, and capital costs. The proposal will continue to underutilize the significant potential of the asset. The capital investment required for this asset is not being adequately addressed in the proposed management fee structure. Sorry, I feel like I'm reading a Dr. Seuss book right now. Fireside Catering LLC is not the best suited to be stewards of land, habitat, and the three other buildings and have no history of such stewardship. The Fireside Catering LLC proposal does not align a strategy for special focus and emphasis on educational programs for school-aged children and other residents, and only briefly mentions educational and community-type programming, and as a catering events company does not include educational programs in its mission. Additionally, most importantly, the RFP response received is for management agreement with Fireside Catering and not Weber Group, Weber Restaurant Group. The achievements presented in the RFP are for Weber Restaurant Group in its entirety, not for the entity seeking a partnership with the town of North Andover. To be clear, the town is not negotiating with the entity which owns Gibbet Hill. The proposal was amassed and was presented during the interview with the proposal, with the town, as a proposal from an entity that has revenues of $40 million, has real estate holdings in Grotton Mass, and other critical points, and that is not the case. The Fireside Catering LLC responds to the RFP and interview is technically flawed and should be thrown out under Chapter 30B. By statutory requirements, the following documents were required to be submitted. Certificate of Vote, certificate of non-conclusion, non-conclusion, and respondent entity disclosure statement, and these are not provided for the entity the town received references for. Additionally, both Laurie Berzloff and Andrew Shapiro specifically rated the totality of Weber Group entities as shown on their evaluation sheets. Laurie listed only Weber Restaurant Group in her evaluation sheet accurately and through no fault of her own, and Andrew Shapiro listed both, Restaurant Group and Weber Restaurant Group and Fireside Catering. Based on these facts, it would be most appropriate and required for the town not to accept the bid as the collect disclosures were not submitted. This letter is not meant to be partisan in any way. And as simply a writing statement of facts, as I see them in my role as a committee and as a resident of the town of North Andover, I also want to be clear, this is not an easy process, and the applicant did not make these facts easily recognizable. I sincerely appreciate the work that was put forth during this process by the town administration and my fellow committee members. I would also like to specifically commend Laurie Berzloff on her constant transparent and objective efforts regarding the estate and her sincere interest in doing what is best for the town of North Andover over the last several years. I appreciate your consideration regarding these matters. Okay, I'm just gonna, there's one more. I was gonna say, I have a feeling that we may have had another one as I was going, so let me just take a quick look. Yeah, open this up again. Can catch my breath? All right. This is from Jim LaFond. I am writing to express my concern about moving forward with the award for the Stevens Estate. I have been out of town since Sunday, have not had a chance to read the town manager's recommendation, but believe that moving forward without information promised the Evaluation Committee is very mature. The proposal of Fireside was incomplete and my full evaluation was not possible. It is not in the best interest of the town to move forward until all requested information has been received and evaluated by the Evaluation Committee. I am happy to elaborate if you wish to contact me during the meeting. Okay. So at this point, I think it might be good for me to go through the presentation because I think there may be some confusion about what's happening tonight.
Yeah, I think, let's, let's do, we've finished public comment.
Yes, there's no more public comment.
So you're gonna give us an update on the Stevens Estate proposal?
I am.
And then there's opportunity for us to kinda engage on this a little bit.
Okay.
Okay. And you have Andrew here too, and Laurie as resources involved in this too, correct?
Yeah, I got Andrew, I got, and Dee, and Laurie, everybody. So I attached to the packet is a, you can say it's a 96-page document, and I know it's a lot, so I'm just gonna run through it with you and then we can certainly ask any questions. So just gonna go through a little bit of the process. So we, as you know, we had one qualified bidder, which the proposal is attached as Appendix 1. We had a second bid that was received late and that we were unable to accept because we have to, we have to reject any late bids. The one valid bid that we received is from Fireside Catering, a subsidiary of the Weber Restaurant Group, and it's for a management contract. So we drafted this RFP in a way that requires proposers to submit a plan for the property, and that means that we're now able to negotiate with a proposer regarding that plan. So I'm excited about that because that does allow us to address a lot of the issues that we heard tonight during public comments, right? We can talk about the current employee, we can talk about, does the catering money include liquor or not, right? We can talk about public access and what does that public access look like? We can talk about the educational programming that they would be offering. So those are all things that we're able to negotiate as part of the contract negotiations. So I know that's hard because when you get a proposal and you hold on to it and you're kind of entering into this process, you want to have all that information, but some of that we're gonna have to tease out as we go through this contract process. So a little bit about the bidder. So we know they're Fireside Catering, a subsidiary of the Weber Restaurant Group. They're a family-owned, the Weber Restaurant Group is a family-owned hospitality group that operates five full-service restaurants, two seasonal cafes, and seven exclusive venues. So that includes Gibbet Hill Farm in Grotton, Fireside Catering in Burlington is part of that, Marine Farm in Beverly, the Fruitlands Museum and Cafe in Harvard, the Crane Estate in Ipswich, the barn at the Crane Estate, Steep Hill Beach in Ipswich, the Bradley Estate in Canton, the Bancroft Restaurant in Burlington, the Scarlet Oak Tavern in Hingham, the Great Marsh Restaurant Essex, and the Double Bowl in Peabody, which is a new restaurant. That group, the Weber Restaurant Group as a whole, brings in $40 million in annual revenue, hosts approximately 450 events a year, and has 800 employees. They also have strategic partnerships with the trustees of the reservation at the Crane Estate and the Bradley Estate, as well as Project Adventure and Green Belt at the Marine Farm in Beverly. Interesting to me specifically is their commitment to Gibbet Hill Farm, the Weber Family. So the Weber Family is who we had an interview with and who we've been speaking with, kind of trying to get answers and questions moving right now. They purchased about 400 acres of land in Grotton that had been slated for an 80-home development, so it's gonna be subdivided and 80 homes are gonna be built. At the site, they have a state park, and if you look at Appendix 6, it gets into a little bit about that. And so Appendix 6 is the historic timeline of Gibbet Hill, kinda tells you, you know, it started in 1645, what, how, when they bought the property, their partnership with the community, and it also has a map of their trail system that they have at that property as well that they maintain. And so that was kind of interesting to me because it is a lot like, I think, what the site that we have here. They did tell us during their interview process how dedicated they are to community engagement and educational programming, and a shared example of just some of the programs that they do at Gibbet Hill, which includes sledding days, a free Thanksgiving dinner for senior citizens, relay races, and other educational events that they do. In their interview with us, they were talking a lot about their commitment to holidays and how that's such a well-loved event and an important event in North Andover, that they want to make sure they continue to have that tradition. They also have a lot of experience in working with communities, and if you look up the Weber Group, you can certainly find a lot of that, including town boards and historical commissions. And so one of the collaborations that I saw that really kind of stood out to me about the historical commissions was the Scarlet Oak Tavern on Main Street in Hingham, and it's kind of an interesting thing. So their proposal is a management contract. They refer to it as an exclusive catering agreement, and then in the price proposal they occurred to it, they referred to a lease payment. So I reached out to them and I'm like, I'm just trying to clarify exactly what you're saying, and they said, this is a management agreement, this is a management fee, it's not just purely catering services, it would be taking over the entire estate. The initial term of the agreement would be for 10 years with two five-year extensions. The proposed contract that they put forward would begin on January 1st. I'm asking them to start, if they would be willing to start, on October 15th, and that's one of the things we'd be negotiating, because if you remember correctly, we're only bringing forth the four-month budget due to the revenues, so that would relieve us from having to put more money forward. And then for their price proposal, which I've attached as Appendix 2, so for the initial 10 years, they would like all the funds to be invested back into the property for expenses, repairs, or capital needs. I actually think this is really positive, right? We've been looking for a long time for ways to get funds to invest back into the Stevens Estate, and this would allow us to do that. After the initial term of the contract, the town could choose to use a portion of that revenue for other town needs. The base fee would increase by 2% per year starting in 2023. So in 2022, it would be $150,000, and in the last year of the contract, it would be $222,000. That's the base rent, rent, fee, management fee. The town will also receive a percentage of 8% of catering revenue beyond $750,000 per year, and I ask, and that's net revenue, so before their expenses. Now, one of the things that we may want to negotiate, and I hate to kinda, it's hard to have these conversations publicly because we're certainly showing our hand before we come to the table, right? But does that catering fee include their liquor fees? Because that would be a significant way to get to $750,000 a lot faster, and so that's something that we'd be talking about with them. A little bit about the cost, because I know there's a lot of conversation about, well, if it's only $150,000 as the base, we would be paying it all for expenses. So we've been trying with them a little bit about what that would look like, and they would take care of the outside maintenance, the landscaping, the plantings. We would, in their proposal, be liable for the utilities, which if you look at the budget from this year, is about $25,000 a year. So it's heating, fuel, and electricity. And we'd be, we, I would recommend that we keep insurance on the building, right? Because at the end of the day, this isn't a lease, we're keeping the building, and I would be very anxious not to keep insurance on the building, so.
Excuse me, but how much is the insurance roughly?
So that's a tough one, so we kind of talked about this a little bit today. So we have about $7,000 in insurance of an outside policy on the Stevens Estate because we have the local license insurance, and we have vacant building insurance, and we also have, we have Homeland Security insurance. We have, what do you call that in Illinois? Thank you. Terrorism insurance on it as well. So we keep a $7,000 binder for all of those, but the building in itself is booked in with the rest of our building, so we can't really pull out what we pay for that individual building. So I'd, we'd have to kind of call Maya and see if they can dig it out for us, but it's included in our entire insurance package.
Just be good to.
Utilities, I usually can, yes.
And, but $25,000, that was this past year, which was kind of a down year, is that?
$25,000 would be based on the request for fiscal year '22 that the director put forward, but I could certainly go back and pull what the actuals were. I did mention to them that the town does not charge itself for water, but we would be charging them for water. So I think that's important to understand. They would do the landscaping, they would do the cleaning, they would do the laundry and all of that, that no, those expenses would all be gone.
Would they be doing the plowing?
Would they be doing the plowing?
So, it's interesting. I was thinking about that earlier today. I can, we could certainly negotiate that, and then ask them to do it. If we were gonna continue to have public access, in some ways, I almost would wanna do the street, and just have them do the parking lot themselves, because, you know, I wanna make sure the street was clear for residents who wanted to go up, perhaps when they don't have events, you know? But that's something we certainly could negotiate with them at the table. So, the main things that I see right now are those utility costs and the insurance costs. And again, just because we're keeping the property, I'd be so nervous to take insurance, the insurance off.
I agree.
A bank wouldn't let you charge it to the tenant, a bank, if you had an income property, they would want, they'd want that, they'd wanna see it, they'd want the binder, they'd want everything.
I agree, it just doesn't feel right to me. So, so the idea behind the contract is that the revenue earned would be reinvested in the buildings and the grounds, right? And so, you know, they would be taking care of those routine costs, like we wouldn't be replacing light fixtures, or painting walls, or any of those routine things, but if there was something big, right, then we would negotiate that with that with them as part of the capital plan. They would make payments monthly. So, as far as the terms in the proposal, they'd be responsible for all aspects and costs of the events and the catering. That would be dedicated sales and operations staffs to manage the daily operations, they're committed to interviewing, endeavoring to retain all of our full-time and part-time staff, and again, if that's something that is very important to us, which is important to me, easy to negotiate into the contract. They did tell us that at the Crane Estate, they had a similar situation, and they did retain three employees there. So, this is not something that they're not used to doing. They cover the contracted cleaning services, they would cover landscaping, marketing, laundry, routine maintenance, the tent rental. They would honor all of the events that we have scheduled at the cost that we have scheduled them for, and they would allow them to use whatever vendor they wanted, so a lot of the time, when you book a wedding, and it's eight months out, you've already picked your caterer, right? You probably have already done your meal testing, right? So, that would all be allowed to continue. They anticipate spending five thousand to ten thousand dollars a year on marketing, and public access to residents and visitors would continue, and that's something that we really need to flush out during our contract negotiations, right? What does that look like? And so, I had a similar contract like this in another community, and we created maps of where they would be allowed to go, and, you know, we had this, a very similar situation where we wanted to make sure we could have public events, and we had a calendar of public events that we mutually agreed upon every year for the dates, to make sure that they wouldn't be double-booked, and we had educational programming, and we had discounts for North Andover residents, and discounts for nonprofits, and those are all things that we'd be able to negotiate when we get into negotiations at the table for contract. So, you know, happy we did it this way, because we'll be able to get there. During the interview, a lot of the questions we asked centered around the rest of the property, right? Because we had a really good proposal for the house, and we were like, well, what about the trails? What about this? What about that? And so, they did express their willingness to expand their scope, to include an emphasis on the entire property, and that would either be with a nonprofit partner, or on their own, and they did it at Gibbet Hill, right? So, you know, that's something that they're very much willing to do, and I'll talk a little bit about that as I move forward. The town would retain ownership and control over what happens with the property, right? And that was something that we heard loud and clear, right? The first time around, nobody wanted to lose this property, because it's so important to the community. So, what do we have to do to keep it? And so, we would retain authority over that, and the space would remain free for public use and enjoyment. Major capital improvements would be completed by the town, using the funding from the revenue of the contract, and a capital improvement plan would be created in concert with the proposer, right? So, the way I envision it is, it might be some things that are easy, right? We need, we need a dishwasher, and a dishwasher costs two thousand dollars, or that's an easy one, I could do that in one year. But we might have something that costs maybe two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, like for instance, we wanna replace some windows, we wanna make sure that we keep them with the historic nature of the windows that we have, right? We may plan it over multiple years, using the revenue, saving the revenue up in the accounts, that we can do those repairs, right? So, there'd be long-term planning and short-term planning for the estate, just like we do now. They still would take part in our capital plan, right? Just to be a different funding source than we use, right? We wouldn't be using free cash, we'd be using funds from this estate. They are gonna make some changes to the buildings, but they're going to be cosmetic in nature, and they're really only to the one-story function room and the ground surrounding the estate, the tent. So, it'd be new windows, siding, a new entry door, staircase, and railing. The inside of the function room would be refreshed, the wood paneling would be removed, and fresh paint applied, so it kinda looks like the rest of the estate. A new seal cloth tent would be installed, and mature plantings would be planted to create additional privacy. That initial investment would be about, between fifty thousand and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, a little bit about the process. So, the evaluation committee was comprised of Laurie Orzloff, Andrew Shapiro, Jill Pelich, Jim LaFond, and Dave Brown, and I'm very thankful, because it was a lot of work, and they all were really committed to the process. They each received a copy of the proposal, they attended the interview and asked questions, rated the proposal after the interview, and they also completed all the reference checks that I sent to all of you. The committee sent me, as the Chief Procurement Officer, a recommendation to make an award to Fireside Catering contingent on Fireside, providing a definitive plan acceptable to the town for the entire estate. Okay, so let's back up for a second. We're not saying today that we're entering into a contract, right, and authorizing a contract tonight, that's not what I'm asking, and that's not what I'm trying to say. What I'm saying is, that what we should do is contact Fireside and say, we want to start negotiating with you, we would like to award the contract, and we'll award the contract, but there's, it's contingent on two things. One, you have to bring forward a definitive plan on how you are going to care for the entire estate, including the trails. That could be with a nonprofit, it could be on your own, but we need to know how you're going to do it. And if it's with a nonprofit partner, we want a signed letter of intent stating who that partner is before we actually sign any contract, one. Two, pending successful negotiation of that contract, right? So, we still have a lot of work to do, to figure out all the questions that we're hearing from the residents, from all of you, right? There's a lot of things to figure out. You know, what does the public access look like? Does the catering fee include liquor? How will we figure out the capital plan? What will we do for mediation if we can't agree? What will the termination look, look like? There's so many things to figure out, right? So, to say tonight that, this is it, it's Fireside, and we're gonna go, that's not what we're saying at all. What we're saying is, we have a really good bid, right? Let's figure out where we go from here, and that's what I'm asking about for, for next steps, right? So, as Chief Procurement Officer, I took all of those evaluation bids, bid documents, I considered them all, and based on the totality of all of them, I determined that it was an advantageous bid, right? And now I'd like to move forward with that. I know there has been some conversation that we should reject the bid and issue a new RFP. It's really difficult to do that, when you have a bid that was deemed highly advantageous, advantageous by almost all of the evaluators, right? And for me to do that, I have to make a determination that canceling the RFP or rejecting all of the proposals is in the best interest of the jurisdiction, and I thought about that a lot, right? So, the thirty-B manual states that if I was going to do that, I would have to state in writing the reason for any cancellation or rejection. So, I would have to be able to sit here and say, I am going to reject this bid because... And then I read the next part, and it said, you may not reject all proposals simply because a favored proposer did not submit the most advantageous proposal. And as I'm sitting here thinking about that, I can't think of a reason besides, I really like the trustees of the reservation to cancel this bid, and that's not enough. And so, I just wanna make that really clear, like, I, I get it, I like the trustees of the reservation, I love going over to Stevens College, they've been a wonderful community partner, but there's not enough here for me to say that we shouldn't move forward with this. So, I recognize that that's super disappointing, but I'm also really confident that if we negotiate the correct contract, if they have a nonprofit partner, or they show us how they're going to do this themselves, that we could really carry out the goal of protecting, preserving the treasure. So, what I'm advising tonight is, one, we start these negotiations, right? We say, we're gonna award the contract, the contract's contingent on two things. One, we see your plan, maybe it includes a nonprofit, maybe it doesn't, but it needs to be amenable, and two, that we can come to agreeable contract terms. Do I know what's gonna happen? I don't know, but I won't know until we start. So, that brings us to town meeting. The warrant closes Monday, right, and I wanna make sure that we have things on the warrant that protect us. So, I wanna move forward with the enterprise fund budget, that will take us through October, like we have, right? And that's how we know that we have enough revenue for that. I'd also advise that we create a revolving account at town meeting, right? So, our revolving account is a little bit like an enterprise fund, right? It's an account that is, has your accounting mechanisms sequestered, we have many revolving accounts. What this revolving account would do, would take all the revenue that we receive from Fireside, and it would say, we can only use it for the Stevens Estate, and I think that's a great goal, and we would authorize it for up to maybe about three hundred thousand dollars, because I, you know, think we could probably get as much as that in the first year. And what would happen is, that money would be sequestered, all the fees that we get monthly would go into that account, and we would only be able to use it for the Stevens Estate, just for the stated purposes, right? Which would be maintenance and capital projects. And so, I think it's a really good way to make sure that we're investing back in the estate. I don't think we should disband the enterprise fund until fiscal year twenty-three, because we're gonna need it for a portion of the year, right? And if we don't get this done, we may need it longer, so I don't wanna do that. And I really think we should move forward with the conservation restriction at town meeting, because I think no matter what we do, it's really important to protect this property, and we haven't been able to do that yet. And, you know, what I'm hearing loud and clear from all of this is that people are concerned about the trails and the watershed, and so am I, so I wanna make sure we do that. And again, I would not advise that we put the management contract on town meeting. Obviously, town meeting doesn't have any jurisdiction over these type of contracts, but I do advise that we have a lot of conversation around this, that we make sure that we introduce the proposer to the town, maybe they come to your next meeting, and they present, what they presented to us, their proposal, and maybe we have a town forum, like we did for the Amazon project, where we go on North Andover Cam, and we record, you know, this is what we're negotiating in the contract, and these are all the things that we think are important, and what's important to you, and that we find ways to have public comment and public input, because it's hard right now, right? It's hard for us to hear the voices, because, you know, we're also isolated, and so I think that's really important. I can go through the appendices quickly and just show you what we have. So, Appendix One, one of the things that we do when we open a bid, is we make sure everything's there, right? We make sure that the minimum qualifications and criteria have been met, and so this is just showing you that we have determined, and that's something that the Chief Procurement Officer does. I usually delegate that authority to Laurie, and Laurie has done this memo, just showing us that everything is here. So, that's done prior to us giving the bid documents to the evaluators. The second appendix is the proposal, and that includes a lot of information about the company, about the different people who work for the company, what their experience is, you know, at one point, it talks about the events they run at Gibbet Hill every year, and their community events, and their farm dinners, talks about the finances and their plans for the estate. Appendix Three is their price proposal. So, if you remember, an RFP, it's a little bit different. First, we open the regular proposal, we evaluate that, the price proposal doesn't get opened until all the evaluations are done, because you really don't want to have the price weighing on you, right, as you're reviewing for its validity. So, the second, this part is the price proposal. Appendix Four is the memo from the evaluation committee to me. So, what happened was, after the interview, the evaluation committee stayed back, had a conversation, this is what their conversation was. Appendix Five is all of the evaluation forms that were filled out by the five evaluation committee members. Appendix Six is the history of Gibbet Hill Farm, as well as the trail network. Exhibit Seven is the proposal presentation that was done to us, and I anticipate would probably be a lot like the presentation that will be done to you at your next meeting. Okay, and I am happy to answer, to the best of my ability, any questions that you might have. I know that's a lot.
Is there a reason that the revolve, what's the difference between the enterprise and the revolving fund? Could a revolving fund be in an enterprise fund?
No, so an enterprise fund is usually only for...
I mean, I get it in general, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the difference between...
An enterprise fund is user fees, so a lot of the time, a lot of communities, and the best example really is the water and sewer one, right? So, if you use water, you pay, you pay, right, and that's their revenue, and then the expenditure actually pays for the work to give you the water, right? So, a revolving account is really like a specialized account, and the money in a revolving account can only be used for a specific purpose.
Isn't that also true of the enterprise, too?
It is and it isn't. So, an enterprise fund has to be appropriated, you can run a deficit in enterprise fund, you cannot run a deficit in a revolving account. A revolving account, you're only allowed to spend up to a certain amount a year. A revolving account has to be authorized every year by town meeting for the purpose and for the amount that can be spent, so there's a lot of protections there for that. For a, for an enterprise fund, we'd have to create a budget, but we don't have, we won't have any personal services at all, we won't really have any contracts or anything.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, I think, I think revolving account makes more sense, but still gives us all the protections of an enterprise fund, because...
That's what I was, that's what I was really asking.
What I don't wanna see happen, in, you know, is six, seven years down the line, you know, money's coming in from the contract, and we end up, you know, needing it for some emergency, and we use it, right? We wanna make sure that if we're gonna do this, that it's going back into the Stevens Estate for the long-term goals.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's explained well, thank you.
It's basically a checkbook that you can only use related to Stevens Estate, or to what it's dedicated to.
Yep.
Check's not good anyplace else, money can't go anyplace else.
Yes, hundred percent.
Good.
That's, that's good.
So, you were saying, what's happening? The next step would be to enter into a negotiation, right? So, it would be to meet with Fireside and start negotiating. Now, in that negotiation, can we address all of the concerns? I mean, I have to put a lot of weight on the concerns of the members of the Long-Term Committee, Joe, Jen, and Jim, just curious that they all start with Jay, but I was writing my notes down, like, oh, that's funny, but they all had similar concerns, and some, you know, different ones. In the contract negotiation, can we address each one of those concerns? Will they be addressed? And, as you said, you know, we would want to see how they would partner with some nonprofit, because that is one of the goals of that Long-Term Committee, was to have a partnership with a, with a nonprofit, and that nonprofit could be Stevens, not Stevens, the trustees.
Could be anybody, right? I mean, so, yes, one of the things that we would do in the negotiations is really, take these, take any other input that we got, take the input from all of you, right, and things that we think of, and we would try to alleviate any of those concerns, just like we do with any contract that we write, right? You know, the development agreement with Amazon was no different, you know, and so we would take all of those concerns, and we would try to address them through the contract, and now, remember, it's negotiation, so at the end of the day, nobody's usually happy, but we'll try our hardest to make sure that we alleviate these concerns, like, what does the, what will your partnership with the North Andover Public Schools look like? Will you offer field trips, free field trips to the students, right? Will you offer a discount for North Andover residents who want to book events there? Those kind of things, we could address all of that in the contract, and that's typically where you would see that, right? Because there is things that they're not gonna realize are priorities for us, that are priorities for us, and that we wanna make sure are addressed. Now, as far as the concerns about what entity they are, I'm sure that we could easily clarify that just by a conversation with them, and...
Whether they're Weber or Fireside, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, it sounds to me like Weber is the larger group, and Fireside is a subsidiary of them, but we can certainly kind of frame that out and ask for their documentation of that. You know, we, we could choose to make the award contingent on them partnering with a nonprofit, period. We don't have to allow them to try to show us how they would do it on their own. If the intent of the board is that I go back to them and say that we are going to award this, and these are the two contingencies, one, successful negotiation of a contract, and two, a partnership with a nonprofit, I will bring that back.
Now, speaking of that, can, can, even though that they are potentially the award winner, but can their partner have a more dominant role than they would? I mean...
You mean in the, in the rest of the estate? Yes.
In the rest of the estate, that, or that they work with them, or does the whole thing have to be rewritten? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, yes.
So, one could be, you know, just a more, a majority vote, or sixty percent could be the nonprofit, and forty percent could be, you know, the running of the functions.
Absolutely, I understand completely. The way we drafted this, I do, yes.
You understand how I'm asking this?
The way we drafted this allows us to work with them on a plan, and so, yes, we could certainly say, you know, we're thrilled at this aspect of it, the part we don't love, right, is that we, we wanna make sure that our, all of our goals are met or managed around the conservation land, our watershed in the trails, show us how you will do that. We need, we need to be satisfied by that, and that is completely acceptable, and we can have that be a really important integral part of our negotiations.
And, of course, if we're not satisfied with the negotiations, then at that time...
Yes, if we cannot come to a final, if we cannot negotiate terms like anything else, then at the end of the day, we would just go back out to bid.
Could you tell me again how long that process is generally? I, I don't recall how long it was, or Laurie, because I know you were actively involved.
You mean the bidding process?
Yeah, so it goes out to bid, so many weeks for a review, then it comes in, then the review...
Yeah, it was like an eight, an eight-week process.
About eight weeks, that seems about right for, for almost all the bids, okay? I was just trying to get a sense of a timeline.
I mean, I'm hoping we don't, doesn't come to them, I'm hoping we're able to negotiate with them and come to a place where everybody is, is comfortable. I could say that, you know, based on the interview, it seemed like they were very amenable to, to working with the town to find mutual success, which to me was important.
Okay.
So, awarding the bid just allows for the negotiation to begin?
Yes.
It doesn't, it's not binding?
It is not binding.
We still, as Mark was clearly saying, we still need to ensure that all our requirements are met and that, you know, there's a partnership somewhere with a nonprofit that will agree to maintain the field, the trails and the property and everything else.
Yes, absolutely, non-binding, it would just, it's the first step in us starting down this path towards trying to get a contract. So I want to alleviate people's fears at home that we're going to, you know, leave this meeting and then a contract's going to be signed with Fireside and you're going to see it say, you know, Fireside Catering on the side of the Stevens estate. That's not how this is going to work. We have quite a process before us of negotiations and reporting back to you before we get to that point.
Speaking of that, I would really prefer that it didn't have a big sign that said Fireside Catering.
I don't think it will.
One of our agreements is that it maintains the name.
And I think they want that, they, you know, they-
As you said it, it made me think of it.
No, no, they, they loved the estate and they loved the history of it and the beauty of it. They were very taken with it.
As you go through this process, I mean, one of my frustrations with this arrangement is how much staff time. So people that we as a community employ to do a certain series of tasks on behalf of the taxpayer get diverted to this facility. And I really do appreciate the amount of work that Andrew and Lori specifically put into this process as members of our staff, but I know that Dee and yourself are equally committed to making sure it's managed the correct way, which of course takes time. I do think it would be helpful for taxpayers and for residents to understand exactly what the time commitment has been from not just the four of you, but overall the folks that we employ inside Town Hall. I realize it's hard, it's tough to go back. I know in the past I've said, you know, ballpark what your time commitment is. I really, as a, as a resident, would love to know moving forward, how much of this takes up town staff time? Because for me, I view the opportunity loss. I'm going to specifically call out, you know, obviously all of this funnels up to you, Melissa, and you do a really good job and your predecessors have done a good job at making sure that, you know, they were good stewards of the taxpayer. But I think about how the next level beneath you often, you know, bring forward grant opportunities, program opportunities that really help enhance our community. And what's the opportunity loss? Because we have staff spending such a great deal amount of time on this. I think that it's helpful for the public to understand that, because we often, I'll think to several of the public comments referenced, you know, almost down to the penny, the dollars, or the pennies, I should say, the sense that could be generated in the form of revenue or are generated as revenue for the facility. But we never have an honest, not because it's dishonest, it's just not clear, conversation about what the costs are to taxpayers. Us, for instance, as select members, select board members this evening. We've had two special meetings now. Today is March 16th, a year ago a pandemic, you know, was declared, correct? So one year anniversary, we've had two special meetings, neither of which have been pandemic-related, both of which have been related to the site. So I, I really would very much like to understand, you know, we're a very well-managed town, a very well-run town. We have a history of that and so I'm glad you're continuing that history. I just want to understand, and I think it would be helpful for the public to understand just how much of a time commitment it has been for our Town Hall team collectively. So I would ask that, I don't know if that's a formal vote, I don't know if you need that direction from the select board, but I, I do think that, I can't imagine why you wouldn't want to know as colleagues, how much time is being spent internally on the Stevens estate?
You start tracking it.
I think it's somewhat unfair question right now because of the pandemic. I mean, we could do that with so many different concerns that we have in town, whether it be the Columbia gas fires. How many hours did we spend on that?
I would hope that we did track that as we built them back. We, we had a lawsuit with them.
My point is this, that's what it's involved in running, running a government. There are different issues at different times that demand more attention. So it's, it would be really hard to really assess the normal day-to-day operations of it in the time of a pandemic. That's my point. I don't know if it would really reveal what information, and then what do we do with it? Because we're trying to fix the problem.
I mean, I think that, you know, here we are two years after the fact, just about two years after the fact, where we've not seen movement. And I think that regardless of whether we move forward with this or a future proposal, I think it's really helpful for our community to understand what the cost of this facility is to our community overall. And so we have a pretty talented team of staff folks that would be working for this community, whether we had the Stevens estate or not. Few other communities have this type of extraordinary facility under their care and management. And, you know, I'm grateful for the work that our team does. And I'd like to understand better how many of their hours are redirected from general taxpayer duties to a facility that's supposed to have an enterprise account, for instance. Because we do often talk about what the cost of the facility is and, you know, there's often a disagreement about what the cost of the status quo is. But one of the things that we absolutely omit is that there's a lot of talented people spending a lot of their time that is funded by taxpayers to make sure that facility moves at least in the positive direction. Whether it's happening successfully or not is another discussion, but the point is there are a lot more, there are many more folks working on that facility than just the individual staff that the enterprise fund funds. And I want to understand what that cost is.
But I'm still confused as to why, as we're trying to work out a remedy that you want that now. And again, especially during a time of a pandemic, in each town, there's always a different issue where we all have to redirect our energies. That's-
Which is a responsibility of government. But the conversation that we keep having as a community, and it's, we are approaching a point where we might end up finding ourselves having this conversation for a third or fourth time, just in my six-year tenure. We've never addressed, well, what are the costs associated internally with town staff that doesn't get reimbursed by that enterprise fund?
Well, actually, it is charged to the enterprise fund, the staff that works on different things. It is charged their time-
We charge back your time, Lori's time, Andrew's time on this?
So we used to charge back up until about last fiscal year, a portion, a portion of Bernadette's time. And we no longer do that, just because the, the estate wasn't really able to afford to continue to fund the indirect cost anymore. So we have moved those over and back into the budget, which is fine. And so it's about $86,000 a year. We do not have an indirect cost study that looks at like me or Lori or Andrew or Lynn. Unfortunately, some communities do do that, right? They, they will do their indirect cost study and if you look at the DLS report, it talks a little bit about how we could do that. We don't do that here. You know, I'm thinking back at my, my water enterprise fund in Everett, I certainly, like, a certain portion of my time was affiliated with that. Because we, that's how we studied it, we interviewed every single employee, how much time a week do you spend on this, on this subject? We, that has not historically been done here. We certainly can look at it and it's certainly interesting. You know, but what I think the focus should be right now is looking at whether or not this is super popular and I, super positive or not, and I agree. I think that right now there's going to be like an unusual amount of time spent on the Stevens estate. And I will say that I think that for one of our smallest budgets, about, you know, $300,000, $350,000 a year, there probably is an unusual amount of time spent on it between me and Lynn and Andrew. Because Andrew oversees that division, Lynn does do a lot of work getting the finances ready and we have to review them pretty monthly. I meet with Joanna, I try to meet with Joanna and Andrew every two weeks. There's not that many department heads that I meet with every two weeks, but because of the nature of what we have going on, it's unusual. So I do think that there probably is an unusual amount of time that is spent on a very small budget. But I also think we could probably go back and forth on this for a long time and maybe not come to, to any agreement on that part of it. What I do think we can all agree about is that we want to do what's right for the estate and, you know-
And that's what, that's what the people of town, the town of North Andover asked us to do.
Right, we want to do what's right. We want to do what's going to be best for the estate, what's going to be able to make us have programming that we, we enjoy, that's going to protect the estate and invest back in it. And, and that's my goal right now, is to make sure, you know, when I interviewed here, this was one of the questions, right? And how are we going to get, how are we going to get this done? How are we going to get this where it was? And I talked a lot about a project that I had done in my last community that reminded me of this, right? That we negotiated the public access, we negotiated how we were going to be able to still have it be a, really a jewel for the community. And I think, I think we can have the success with this as well, if we're willing to all work together on it. Except it'll still be gone.
Well, but it is, I think, for taxpayers, important questions, because if this is unsuccessful, because that is only predicated on the belief that what you have before you is something that we can move forward with and that you can successfully negotiate with. But if, for whatever reason that isn't the case, this process in theory could start all over again. Or we may start even farther back, just because of the time that may lapse. And so-
You're right.
It doesn't change the fact that there are missed opportunities right now. For every hour, you're not focused on the other business of general government.
So I have a few questions for you, Madam Town Manager. So the Weber group is the bigger entity, this is a, Fireside's a subsidiary. They, their financials are not as robust as $40 million. How does that work into it if we enter into this 10-year lease with them and they default on this lease payment?
Sure, so we always have very strict termination language as well as default language in our contracts. And so we would make sure that that's addressed as well. I'll be, so we've been meeting with the Webers directly. So we can kind of talk to them about who's going to be signing on the contract and who's going to be the actual signatories. We haven't had that conversation yet, obviously, because it's still at its infancy, although they are the ones that are named kind of in the proposal. But we would make sure that we had a lot of protective language about defaults, about termination, et cetera. This not being a lease is helpful in a lot of ways, because it's not something where we would have to go to court and ever to get an eviction, right? We would be able just to go to a regular, not, we'd have to go to land court to get an eviction. We'd be able just to go to a regular court and get an injunction and not allow them in the building anymore. So this gives us a lot more protections.
Right, because there's no capital, I suppose, to go after on a catering company. Whereas, obviously, they have land and buildings and stuff and that would be a better protection. So I think that that is important to-
That's a really interesting point, yeah.
To, to look into that. And I think the, the costs that you negotiate as far as who's paying for what, that's really important with that $150,000 figure. So that we get a true sense of really what we are reinvesting back into the Stevens estate. I looked back a little bit and when you average out what we're really made over a 14-year period, it's, it's, it's pretty low. So obviously, we want to be above that. But even if we were to make $100,000 a year on this, there's some major capital improvements and how do we address that?
So I've been thinking about that a lot. I mean, my thought is that we would negotiate with them and meet and talk about how we would put together a capital plan. And some of those would be long-term capital improvements that we would save for over multiple years and some of them would be short-term capital improvements. And we would figure out based on the revenue that we expect to get, how we would fund those. It's not so different from the capital improvement plan that we, we create now and it still probably would be part of that process, only we'd have a new revenue source to use to fund those requests. They still would be eligible to apply for CPC and so could we, for things that may be eligible, right? Right, regular routine maintenance is not. You can't fix a roof with CPC funding, right? And so we'd want to be really strategic about that. But we may decide that we, we want to have CPC funding to, I don't know, do some facade or something else that's important to us that maybe isn't as important to, to them, right? So I think talking about that, having a way to, having a way to figure out or mediate what's going to happen when there's not an agreement is going to be really important, right? So do we agree to a mediator? You know, figuring out ways to kind of target what those problems could be moving forward. But my thought is that using this revolving account, we'd be able to save money in it, right? And so we'd be able to, just like we do with the capital stabilization account, do a lot of those long-term costs. And because we have a contract, I mean, technically, we could even take debt and pay it using the revolving account, right? So, you know, there's lots of creative ways to get these projects done now with this revenue source.
And would they, would you negotiate with them, for them to participate in the capital improvement program? I think it was with Project Adventure that they ended up renovating their kitchen, but I forget which one it was, but-
Yeah, I think we certainly could. I mean, we talked, one of their, one of their references, I think Lori checked, talked about how they were in another facility that they had like a similar agreement with and the refrigerator broke. And they ended up just going and buying a new refrigerator and not even using the revenue source, because it was something that they said they were using. They seem like the type of, from the revenue, from the references that we checked, like the kind of good corporate partner that wants to partner with, with the community on fixing things and doing things, especially if it benefits them.
So we have two written references?
Yep, and then I emailed you four additional ones that were checked-
Okay.
-by the committee members.
Okay, so these are two that are separate than the four ones that they had, that each individual committee member-
Four of the committee members checked references and submitted them.
Yeah, I mean, I would just, you know, fridge is one thing, right? And redoing the plumbing and the electricals is like two very different things. So I'd be curious how that would sort of shake out moving forward, because, you know, I think it, I think it would be more money than maybe we're getting now, but it's not, it's not millions.
Yeah, definitely not millions.
And how, right, and how that, you know, how do we take care of the entire property?
Pro and planning, I think, will be very important.
And my last question, they obviously have a relationship with the trustees already. Have they mentioned the trustees or have they, is that ever come on, come up in conversation?
So we- You read that somewhere in-
Yeah, they, they do have, they have a pre-existing relationship in two different properties with the trustees. We have not really confirmed that they've been having any conversations about a partnership. You know, so, and I think because there was the potential for them to be being like a separate bidder, maybe they hadn't. But now we will start to encourage that. And they're not, you know, the trustees aren't the only group, they also do work with Green Belt.
Right.
Right, so, you know, they may reach out to Green Belt, I don't know. But if, the sentiment I'm kind of hearing from you right now, and I don't want to put words into your, anyone's mouth, but what I'm hearing is that one of the contingencies that we want is a nonprofit partner. Or are we comfortable with them coming forward with their own plan like they did in Gibbet Hill?
Well, I think the long-term committee had stressed that in their, in their proposal or in their, you know, in their proposal to us that that was part of their desires. And so I think honoring what they did, you know, if, certainly I'd like to ensure that we discuss that with Fireside and then that, you know, and see where we can go with it. But I think it's a, a desire, I mean, as I've always said, I mean, when this first came out, the trustees were the first ones that I thought of and this was a long, long time ago. Unfortunately, you know, their bid wasn't on time and that's a problem. But if there's a way that they or another nonprofit can still be part of the contract going forward to maintain the, the trails and the property, I think that might allay a lot of the fears that people have about what that, what would happen up there. So I think, you know, and certainly the long-term advisory committee has made that, you know, part of their recommendations. So I think we should honor that, as well as the other concerns that were brought forward by the members of that, that group.
Yeah, absolutely, which I think really is the, for me, understanding their concerns, that the biggest one really is going to be that and then education, which I think will be something that they'll be all over, so.
Property, it's a valuable building and it's underutilized right now. And there are so many things that we could tie the community together and use it and I think that that's important to everybody.
And it seems like everybody involved, adding on to what you were just saying, Laura, is almost like bursting at the seams with these great ideas to just make it bigger and better. And I love that, I do love that the long-range planning committee put a real strong emphasis, and I'm sure you do, Laura, and probably Phil, because you have kids in the school, is the educational component. Because how do we, how do we keep the efforts and the dreams moving forward? But other than to educate the youth is how important it is. So this, I, so I can, you can, you can hear and feel the long-range committee's passion for that. That we do keep the dream going with a wonderful place that's protected for generations upon generations. So I, I think, yeah, I think, Dick, you're right, they made that very clear. And we should try to do our best to, to do that.
I think, Laura, you bring up a, you know, good point, just in terms of make sure that we're on solid legal footing with this. And so I know that's been sort of, kind of allured to a couple of times. So I, I might ask if we could just maybe have KP or somebody just give us a quick opinion that we followed the process as, as laying out, or something along those lines, to make sure that we can say, since we only had one acceptable bid, I think it's, it's like saying, you know, we've got all these players, we can draft, but there's this only one and you just want to be a little more comfortable with that. So I'd like to see if there's some sort of mechanism that you can help us feel just that added level of comfort, if you understand?
Yeah, so you have an opinion right now about not accepting a late bid and you just want additional opinions stating that we can move forward with a valuation of just one bid?
With what we have, that, the documentation we have, what we've got is sufficient to move forward. I think that would be, I think that would be helpful. And, and I think, you know, I, I heard from, you know, you started, I think, right off the top, Dick, which is identifying the contingencies and sort of all those negotiating components of it. And, and one of the things that you, this is going to take a little while to do, not, not a huge amount of time, but this is not next week or two weeks from now. And I'm thinking, you know, because there's sort of an attention on this, it might be nice to have, I know we've got so many things going, coming together with town meeting and so forth. I'm working on a group of things and everybody else hears. But it'd be nice to have one person from the select board sort of be kind of the liaison, the kind of communicator with you. That way, we can kind of channel that way. And I'd like to suggest that we put Dick in that, that role, volunteer you for that. And that puts you in a position of being able to really have an inside connection of what's going on, be able to kind of communicate back and forth over the next whatever period of time. I think if you'd like to do that, I'd like to offer that, that opportunity.
I think, well, then I would like to serve on it as well, because I am the, the person who, on the board, who is on the Stevens estate committee and-
Well, I think that, and I, and I can appreciate that. What my thought process was, Rosemary, is that we've got all this input from folks that are on the committee. And so one of the, one of the things that I think helps with transparency is that you get as many opinions and as broad a perspective of inclusion as possible. And so somebody who hasn't been part of that process, part of that negotiation, may be in a position to bring in more perspective. But I'll, I'll ask my associates here.
And I would respectfully ask to serve on it with Dick, I have no problem with that.
So I can't have a subcommittee, so I can't have two, so I can only have one.
What, right.
What I could do is, all one recommendation could be that we divide the topics up so that if we have, for instance, if it's, you know, talking about the capital, we include Dick, but if it's talking about the public access and that type of items, it's- But if it's talking about the public access and that type items, it's Rosemary. And we have them as separate kind of negotiation points, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. It could get a little confusing.
It could be, but you know, I'd rather have.
Am I supposed to be there?
I'd rather have more fingers in it than less fingers in it at this point.
And I'm fine with that. I mean, we can decide later on, you know, who's more interested in which topics that we'd want to be involved in. But if we can only have one person at a time being involved, it sounds like that's the, the kick, the situation. There's only one person at a time can be involved.
Would that work for you guys? What I could do basically is I could divide, I could do a draft. What I could do is I could take what I have in my head for a contract and I could pull the bullets out. And we could talk, the three of us, about what interests you in the contract. And then I'll create basically two contract days to meet with the groups that we can have those conversations. It's a little more complicated, but you know, I think that having you both involved would be really helpful.
And then I'm fine with that.
Good, okay. Oh, there's another public comment. It's very short. Would you like Laurie to read it aloud?
She's a little slower than you.
He is, I'm fast. But there's a lot of pages to read.
We have to really pay attention.
It is very short. John Maven. He notes that he's on the Conservation Commission. I understand the recommended bidder did not meet the full submittal requirements. It is prudent to move forward, is it prudent to move forward with a decision tonight if these important factors are unknown? I urge you to make the decision on all the bid factors.
So I think the other, the other thing that I think is an important point which you, which you just brought out recently, which is that, you know, working with a management agreement here and then generating that revenue gives us an opportunity, as you say, to use that revenue to pay for any bonding, any debt there. And that is not a position we've had before. Before, we took the, the profit, the net revenue, and we just kind of threw that into the, the big bucket and said it covered a bunch of other costs. Now we're able to specifically identify the cost of operation, what's our expense, what's our exposure, what the management company is. And now we have a path to actually take care of the, the real long-term capital issues there, whether it be the, the gatehouse, whether it be other parts of the building. We didn't have a path for that other than jumping into the CIP and taking that from some other bonding opportunity. So it's actually really a very good path to do that. And we didn't have that path before. And that's, I think that the hidden value that goes well beyond the, well, it's $100,000 or $120,000. It's what that means incrementally in terms of the debt leverage. Because that's what we would do.
I saw that as well. The business that we're in, we're hoping along those lines. When you have a dedicated income, that you, perhaps we could do some short-term bonds or whatever, using that income to make some of the repairs that you've just mentioned. You and I are both on the, on the exact same page. I was actually going to say it, say that myself. Well, that's, again, that's what we do for a living, so we.
It's exciting.
Yeah. I really do. So lots of work ahead. Ultimately, what we're seeing here, the first step of the negotiation, we've got good connectivity as, as a board for, for this process. So there's kind of work ahead. Is there anything else anybody else wants to add kind of to our conversation with this?
Just how long do we think the negotiations will take?
I don't know. You know, in my experience, something like this would usually, if we were meeting weekly, would probably take six to eight weeks to kind of hammer out the whole thing. I'd like to have it done before a town meeting, if we can get to an agreement. Because if we're going to have the, if we do decide that we're going to move forward with the conservation restriction at town meeting, which I'd be interested in hearing what you all think. I think having it done and being able to show people what our plan is for all that conservation restriction is going to be really important. Right? Rather than just to get up and say, we want a conservation restriction because we're trying to get it conserved. So I, I'd like to see that done before a town meeting so that we can do that.
And if, after the six to eight weeks of negotiations, we decide that this is not a good plan for, right? And then we have to reopen the process and all of that. We are really looking at another, at a, separate from that, a special town meeting to appropriate funds for Stevens Estate from October through the rest, through July.
Yep.
The rest of fiscal year '22 end. What, could you explain to us what those options might entail? Or what those, like what we, what, what are we going to be asking? If we can't get to an agreement with Fireside and we have to do this next town meeting, what, what are we going to be asking the residents of North Andover?
It's hard to know. So you know, we've built a budget based on what we think worst-case scenario revenues are, right? We don't know when things are going to open back up. Even with like the new normal and, and phase four, you know, it, it still inhibits us from having larger, larger events like we typically would have. So you know, we create this budget based on this worst-case scenario funding. Best-case scenario, the revenues look great in October and we're able to raise and appropriate before, before the tax rate is set and everything is great. Worst-case scenario, things look like they look right now and we're not able to appropriate much more funding than we already have at the original town meeting. It's hard to say at this point. Like if you had asked me last year if we were going to have to transfer $300,000 from stabilization, up to $300,000 from stabilization, I would have said you were crazy, right? But you know, with COVID, one of the biggest things we see is that things change every day. You know, so it's hard to know, but we would be asking for, we'll either be asking for an additional appropriation or we'll be unable to move anything else forward.
Well, I was just thinking of the, I think DOR did a nice flow chart.
Yes, we have that on our next, yes, it's our next item.
No, I can say that for later, but I thought they did a nice flow chart of understanding like.
They did a great job.
Where we are and where we need to go.
Yep, I can certainly go to that and talk about that.
Question, so, Mr. Chair, I did ask, I did hear you ask about outside counsel reviewing the RFP process. And I, I'm sorry, I was distracted with reading some of the bids and everything. What was the response to that?
I can ask for that. I have no concerns since both Laurie and I are certified purchasing agents, but I'll help us both. But we will have them just look through everything and make certain that everything was done correctly.
Okay.
Yep. Mark has been very helpful and I'm sure we'll be able to turn that over really quickly.
Great.
All right, so do we want to, all right, so just so I understand, just so I make sure we're good. I'm going to award the contract contingent on two things. One being a nonprofit partner, is that what I'm hearing from everybody? And two being that we are able to negotiate amenable charms of a contract. So those are the two things. Dick and Rosemary are going to help me with the negotiations. We're going to put on town meeting the revolving account. Do we want to put the conservation restriction on or do we want to wait until the next town meeting?
I'd say put it on. Is there any reason not to put it on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm for putting it on.
Okay. All right, so that's that. Okay, great. Yes?
With respect to awarding the contract, so we haven't, or awarding the bid, we haven't heard from them directly yet. Is that going to happen before next week, before we hear from them?
What do you mean, heard from them?
Well, they were going to come in and do a presentation.
We'll have them come in on the 22nd and to present, just to introduce themselves to you and present to them, to you what they presented to us. Again, I mean, awarding, all awarding a contract does is allow us to start those negotiations, start negotiations. So it doesn't bind us to anything.
And I am a little sensitive to that word. I think people will hear award and they'll think it's just done. So is it sort of a tentative award subject to?
It's contingent.
I think we have to make sure those words are all there because the public will hear that and think, oh, it's, it's done.
It's a contingent award. So awarding, award.
Contingent award makes sense.
The contract is the legal term, but we award, like we said in the memo, it's award contingent on us being able to achieve these two things. If we can't achieve those two things, then the award goes away. But it's the legal term that we need to use starting negotiating with them.
Okay, so you have to use it, okay, I understand.
Just like a contingent sale, right? We gotta get, right? You gotta fix all these things in the title.
UAC.
CJ Gangee read, I don't remember what it was there.
I didn't realize there was another one.
I think they just sent it again.
Oh yeah, I can't hear what you're saying.
We have a public comment from CJ Gangee.
There is a public comment that I thought was already read, but I guess it has not been read.
I'll read it right now, that's okay. Dear members, this is CJ Gangee, Chestnut Street. Dear members of the Select Board, I've read the correspondence related to the bid from a single catering company and potential problems with that bid. I am aware the trustees' bid was thrown out because it was a few minutes late. I urge the board not to spend more money on this RFP process, e.g. consulting with counsel, but start anew and re-bid. I go forward with only one bid is not only unacceptable, it runs contrary to the work of the Long Term Advisory Committee. In light of the considerable time and effort our committee put into recommendations and the obvious care and esteem of the people of the town, whole of the Stevens Estate, I respectfully submit that the RFP process must begin again. I did want to, I'm sorry, I did want to address, because I, I was alarmed when I read the public comment that said that we did not allow somebody to bid. So that person actually withdrew from the bidding process. And we have emails where they basically said they were not interested in bidding, which we forwarded to the board, which is why they didn't get the addendum because they withdrew from the process. And so once you withdraw from the process, you no longer get the updates on, on the bid because you say you're not bidding. So I just wanted to explain that.
Appreciate the clarification.
Okay, so are we ready to talk about the DLS report?
Yeah.
Okay. So there was some questions that I received about the timeline here and I just want to explain to everyone. So I originally received a DLS report, a draft of the report on January 25th. We, I met with them the week of February 10th to review the report. There was two things in it that were incorrect, which they fixed. And then, you know, I, there's a series of emails where I'm saying, are you done with the report yet? Are you done with the report yet? Are you done with the report yet? My board wants to hear from, hear the report. And then they mailed it to me, the final, on March 11th, which is why I included it in this agenda. And I actually thought it was really helpful that we received it in time for us to be able to talk about it here. So if you remember correctly, we asked the Division of Local Services at the state to conduct a fiscal, financial management overview of the enterprise fund accounting for the Stevens Estate. This came up because the trustees of Osgood Hill had concerns about the financials. They had brought them up a few times, they had asked for an audit. And I've had really good luck working with DLS in the past. When you come in, they really understand municipal finance. A lot of them were former municipal employees and they're really great to come in and do a review and it doesn't cost us anything. So it's great. Sometimes it takes a little bit of time, especially with COVID because they're all working from home. So, yes.
There's been this drumbeat about financials there. Can you explain and elaborate more on what DLS is?
Oh yeah, Division of Local Services at the Department of Revenue.
Which is a state agency.
A state agency, yes. They are a state agency that we asked to come in and review the enterprise fund for us. So what they did was they came here, they actually sat in this room, and they met with me and Andrew and Joanna and Lynn and a bunch of members of the trustees of Osgood Hill. And they had a full day of interviews. And then they reviewed all of our financial statements, other documents and review of the accounting. And then they submitted to us a review of that as well as their recommendations. So just a quick summary, because this is a long report and I'm sure, you know, it's attached to the agenda for anybody who wants to read it. But the report goes ahead to determine that the enterprise fund accounting is consistent with the state's guidelines and general accounting practices and that our budget document clearly presents the finances, accomplishments and challenges of the Stevens Estate. The document lays out two potential avenues for the estate that they saw. So one would be that the town could continue to operate knowing the entity. But they note that if we're going to continue in that direction, we need to determine an additional revenue source or revenue stream from the estate, most likely the general fund. So basically what they're saying is that in order for us to be successful and continuing to operate it on our own, we have to start to insert some taxpayer money into the estate. This isn't surprising to me because we have a real chicken and egg situation with the Stevens Estate, right? If we had funds to invest in it and we could bring on, you know, eight employees to do marketing and all kinds of marketing funding, we probably could have a lot more events, right? But right now we have just Joanna, who does an amazing job, but she's only one person. But we can't increase the budget because we don't have the revenues to show that we're able to sustain the budget. And so DOR will not allow us to do that. So we're in this kind of weird conundrum, right? Their second option they lay out is the involvement of a third party, which is what we're suggesting today. So I stated in the report, because I know this is something else that people often talk about, the cell phone tower revenue is continuing to go to the general fund, which is appropriate. Currently, that revenue is actually being used to offset the indirect costs of the estate. So if you remember correctly, we moved them all over and that's kind of how I thought about it, that this was okay because of that. And then I just go on to thank the Division of Local Services for creating the report and my team for, for working with them and the volunteers. And then I just wanted to say that the, the report references a lot a difficult relationship between the trustees of Osgood Hill and the administration. And I think that, in my opinion, both the trustees and my team have worked really hard over the last 18 months to improve that relationship. And I think that due to increased communication, collaboration and mutual respect, we've actually done that. And I look forward to continuing to do that. But I also recognize that there's been times when it's been strained. And you know, I think that having that said in a report, well, you know, at first read was horrifying, in many ways is probably healing for all of us to kind of see. So I think, I think it's, it says a lot about the community that we're willing to work together, recognize a problem, work together to evaluate it, have a third party come in and look at it, right? Because some people may be afraid to do that, right? What if we are doing something wrong? What if the report had shown that things were incorrect? So I'm glad that we took the time to do that. And I think that it's really transparent that we had this third-party review done and that we were able to bring it before the entire town.
I agree, I mean, and you know, page eight of the report really kind of gives you the flow chart of kind of the choices. Like there's no sort of, sort of, sort of. It's, these are definitive choices we have to make one way or another. But it's within the context, as you say, of recognizing it. And I think it's, it's helpful to have this, you know, obviously additional work to put this together. But I think it validates the process, the Long Term Committee and sort of why we're at this place we're at now. And so, you know, I appreciate all the time that you and the staff put in. Because this is a long-term decision. And you know, we've got two things that we're trying to accomplish here at the end of the day. We have a building and we also have this land. And the land and the building don't necessarily match up in terms of the expertise needed to take care of those. But yet we have to find a way to do that. And I think this is helpful in reinforcing that. Buildings, yes, yes, that's exactly.
Well, what's interesting is that one of the employees who we originally met with about this, about this project, actually one of his first jobs in municipal government was at the Commandments Mansion in Watertown, right? So he actually, when we, when we talked to him about this and it was also run through our enterprise fund. And so he was kind of uniquely situated to be able to, to work on this. So I was thrilled when, when he explained that to us.
So has this been presented to the trustees yet?
So I just received this on the 11th. And I sent it to everybody, I sent it to the trustees and to you all together on the 12th.
Any comments from that group?
So far, Andrew would know, no, nothing yet. They, they did say they're going to set up a meeting to talk about it, so.
Well, I think this is a great comprehensive accounting of the estate since, since 2002. Well, even before that, right? Including all of the CPC funding that was, that was expended there. And it really is a very comprehensive view of what's going on. And I think it validates everything that has been really discussed over the last few years.
They did a great job.
Yeah.
It's very comprehensive.
It's not just the financial either. I mean, it does get into the interpersonal relationships, which is, I was expecting a, you know, straight old Gatsby report or something like that, but it has a lot of narratives in here too.
I'm sure we all, I mean, you know, you're interviewing people who are involved and passionate about, about the estate, right? That's probably, they probably heard from all of us, you know. So I'm, I'm glad in many ways because at least it shows that it's, it's a true accounting of what's happened, so.
Yeah, it should definitely be, be public and enjoy the read.
Yes, sure.
Anything else on Stevens Estate fund or that? If not, we will, our next meeting is quick, as they say, on Monday, the 22nd. And after no other, are there any comments from Select Board members? Otherwise, I'll just hear a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I hope that we adjourn our meeting.
I feel guilty about seconding it, seeing how that I was running late to family obligations, but I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.